Good evening. Welcome tonight to our Board of Education meeting. We met earlier in executive session. We met in executive session pursuant to RC 12122G5 to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. Jenny, will you call the role?
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Dibble?
Here. Will you rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Thank you. So will you call the role?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Dibble?
Yes. I'm going to dispense with my part of the board comments, the president's comments, because I seem to be losing my voice all of a sudden, so I'm going to preserve it where I can. So Matt, do you have anything to share?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of quick items. One would be appreciate the board's and board-elect attention at the Ohio School Board Conference last week. I know not all of us could make it, but the group that was there, I thought it was really good for Lakota moving forward and a lot of the sessions that we went to, and plus the presentation that Mrs. Logan and Mr. Dibble helped with, and was stellar and heard good things. So appreciate that, and it's nice to put good feelers out to at the state level about what our kids and what our staff's doing here at Lakota. So I thought that was a very good positive. The other thing I'll mention is real quick is I did get a letter from the President of the State School Board last week, Tess Elshoff, right after Capitol Conference congratulating Lakota on achieving the Momentum Award. So based on the evaluated scores as a district, but also six of our buildings also achieved a Momentum Award, and I'm sitting here thinking of who the six are, and I can think of five, so I'm not going to mention them because I'm going to leave one person out, and that's going to not be good for me. But anyway, those are just the two things I want to mention.
And what is the Momentum Award?
It is tied into the local report card and getting As on the evaluated measures on the school report card and the district. So as a district overall, since we had so many As, we achieved that status and ranking from ODE, so.
And that measures growth for our students.
Measures growth for our students, correct.
Excellent, thank you. Jenny?
I don't have any comments right now.
Okay, so we'll go on to student spotlight. We actually have two student spotlights here.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. I'd like to thank our students and their families for being with us this evening as we celebrate two student spotlights. Before I introduce our first group of students, I'd like to give you a little background information. During the last school year as juniors, over 1.6 million students in more than 22,000 high schools throughout the United States took the PSAT NM-SQT examination. From this nationwide pool, less than 1% of this year's high school seniors have been named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Six of these students represent Lakota East and Lakota West High Schools. According to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, to become a finalist, semifinalist must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, submit an essay, and earn an SAT score that confirms his or her performance on the qualifying test for the PSAT that he or she took as a junior. The National Merit finalist will be announced in February. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing our six National Merit semifinalists, who will tell you a little bit about themselves. From Lakota East, Ryan Ackerman, Alex Dunaway, and Weston Linder. Sorry, Weston. And from Lakota West, Megan Merk and Jacob Moore are here. Unfortunately, Stephen Sweeney is not able to attend. However, it's also important to note that less than one quarter of 1% of students received a perfect score on the ACT this year, and Stephen Sweeney is one of them. So I'd like to invite his kids up and say a few words.
Don't be shy.
Someone take the lead.
We don't bite, just come on up.
Hi, I'm Ryan Ackerman. We were asked to talk about an impactful experience at our Lakota school respectively, and one of the most impactful experiences I've had is with a club at school called JSA, that's Junior State of America, and it's a politics debate and activism club. It's got me more involved in politics, whether it be helping out with one of the trustee races preceding November, or just talking about politics and political issues in Cincinnati or Columbus or in DC. And it's just been a really interesting time, and we were also asked to talk about what we wanted to do after high school. I want to go to college, obviously, and I hope to major in political science and economics and then go to law school, and then I'd like to be an attorney.
Nice.
I'm Alex Dunaway, also a senior at Lakota East. One of the most impactful experiences at Lakota East for me was joining the golf team. Although I did have some good experiences on the course, it was nice. Golf kind of made a network of faculty and staff at Lakota East that I've become close with, including my coaches, the assistant athletic director, the athletic director, the principal, and golf has really kind of introduced me to some new people as well as provided me with some lasting memories on the course. After high school, I plan to major in either business analytics or industrial engineering, and ideally I'd like to go to Georgia Tech, but if not, if the application doesn't work out there, then Michigan is my second choice.
Nice.
My name's Jacob Moore. An impactful experience that I've had during high school is I've run cross-country and track, and I think that that's given me something very valuable, or something that I'm not very good at that I get to work towards, and that's been very impactful because it's given me a sense of drive and purpose throughout the years, and that's invaluable, really. After high school, I'd like to go to college, and I'd like to study physics and hopefully become a research physicist.
Good evening, board. My name is Weston Linder. A very impactful experience I've had, like Ryan, is our Lakota East Junior State of America chapter. I had the opportunity to start my involvement freshman year, kind of get involved with the state organization. I'm now the Ohio River Valley Governor. This past weekend, we just had our Fall State Convention at the Ohio State House with 285 delegates. Just a really great learning about civic engagement, learning about leadership, learning about all those things through a hands-on environment, and that really wouldn't have been possible without the support of Lakota for those extracurriculars. I can tell you that the Lakota East chapter's been around for over 20 years. It's one of the oldest chapters in our state, and we always carry the Lakota East name proudly at conventions. We actually just recently got a flag that has the JSA logo and the Thunderhawk proudly next to it, so really great experience that Lakota has facilitated. I can't imagine where I would be had I not had that experience, completely different course of my life, I think. And kind of in that vein, I don't know exactly what I want to do in my life, but I'm looking for something that allows me to make the world a better place, have a net positive on the world while allowing me to pursue my passion for government and public policy and politics and things of that nature. But thank you for having us tonight.
Very nice.
Hi, I'm Megan Merk, and my impactful experience is just like my teachers in general, and they're very supportive and helpful, especially this year when my classes are really hard and they help me get through all my course load, especially because I do gymnastics, which takes up 20 hours in my week, and so I have trouble balancing it all, but they're really helpful in understanding. And my future plans, I either want to do data analytics or accounting to major in, and I'm thinking of either Miami University or Washington University in St. Louis.
Great.
Congratulations again to all of you. So our second student spotlight is Dustin Horder, a senior at Lakota East High School, who is leading the pack in 5K races. In the past month, Dustin has become only the fifth male OHSAA athlete to win back-to-back Division One state championship titles for cross-country, according to modern-day records. He then went on to earn the top spot at the November 12th Nike Cross Midwest Regional Championship, where he competed against top runners in Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, Michigan, and Missouri. This past weekend, Dustin once again led the pack, finishing nine seconds ahead of the second-place finisher. At the Mideast Cross Country Championship in Kettering, he competed against top senior athletes from Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, and Michigan. Dustin is the number-two ranked 5K runner in the United States and is currently training for the Nike Cross Nationals meet in Oregon. Please welcome Dustin Horder.
Thanks for having me tonight. Truly, without the help of all my staff at Lakota East and the coaches, teachers, Ms. Davis, who's in the crowd, my athletic department, the boosters, I wouldn't have the opportunity to be here tonight. As you said, just I won state this year. It was a pretty tight race from the very beginning. I was racing against GMC rival from Middletown, and come the last 100 meters, we were side by side, and I was able to pull it out by .4 seconds, so really just kind of was going through my head at that point is just trying to do it for Lakota and do it for East and just remember the good memories from the ticker-tape parade from last year and getting to come here in front of you guys around this time last year. So really, all that kind of stuff was going through my head and motivating me, but I'm happy I could do it for East and shine a light on the great programs we have here, not only at East but also the District of Lakota, so.
What are you going to do next year?
I am going to be attending the University of Indiana. I'll be studying business in the Kelly School of Business and probably in the area of marketing.
Dustin, before I met you, the only role model I had for cross-country was Mr. Dibble, so you can understand. You know, I have a lot of knowledge there.
You have ways to go.
What's your, like, your training regiment for that, for cross-country, and is it different from track to cross-country?
I'll run about the same mileage. I probably averaged about 60 miles a week this year. I run seven days a week, so really no days off, maybe one here or there to get a little rest if coach is feeling generous that week.
Really?
Yeah, I maxed out at 70 this year and had three or four morning runs a week, so I wake up at 5:30, put in four, come back in the afternoon, put in eight or nine.
Do you have more than one pair of gym shoes?
Yes, I do. I rotate two, and I get a new pair every 300 or so miles, so.
I got the same pair I had seven years ago. It shows you how much I run. Very good, very good. I'm impressed.
You don't have to respond to that, Dustin.
You run fast. We all know that, but I don't think many people have a concept of how fast you are running. When you won the states, what was your mile pace? Because people can usually relate to, like, you know, 5K is longer than most of us run, and everybody knows what a fast mile is, and everybody knows that we run about 20 miles, so.
Ray might be a little slower.
Yeah, so at the state meet, I ran 1502 for the 5K, and that was an average of 450 a mile, I believe, for my PR. I ran 1436 this year, which ranked me second in the nation. And actually ended up losing that race, but I ran 441 per mile in that race, so pretty good competition there, but yeah.
That's really fast. Congratulations.
That's great. Fantastic.
I have a question for all of you. So how many of you participated in our internship programs at all? Any of you?
Two.
So.
Two out of seven.
All of you guys, or just two of you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you didn't participate in it, Dustin, because you were too busy running, probably?
I did not, but would you like to elaborate on what this are? Would you elaborate?
Opportunities to go out into our business community and be a part of that program for a couple of weeks or throughout a semester.
When do those take place, during the school year or?
Somewhere in the summer, and some are during the school year.
I'll definitely check that out.
Please do.
Thank you.
I think you'd enjoy it. Might teach them a thing or two as well.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
We're going to do the picture?
So we're going to do pictures. Why don't we get the National Merit people up first? Which one of you guys was a politician?
Two of them. You two can't stand by each other because you're both matching. They should be bookends or, like, maybe right in the middle.
They can switch the sizes out afterwards if you need to switch sizes out.
They're soft. They're addicting, they are, aren't they? I like, I'm like, as I get older, I'm a t-shirt snob now, you know? I shouldn't be, but I am. Here, Ben, you get in and I'll grab the, I have respect for my elders. Oh, wait a minute, he's too tall, but it's all right. Next, next.
Who's going to get it on Twitter first, is the question?
Elder.
Oh, yeah.
Good, all right. Thanks. Congratulations. Very happy for you. Congratulations. Hey, well, this is the first time I've ever seen you shy. I was, you should have taken the mic first. I was disappointed. Congratulations.
The physical distance was too great to get there, so.
Congratulations. Very happy for you. You get, nope, you get in, because you're a board member, you get closer to him. I'll get on the end. Or do you want me to here? We'll just do that.
Yeah, that'll work.
Congratulations, Dustin.
Thank you very much.
Wait, we got some more pictures?
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Davis has one of those poppets on the back of her phone. Congratulations. We following you still?
You liked reading from the back there?
No, I wish. I'm getting messages. I always get nervous when I get messages. I like how you said, "my staff at East and my athletic department."
That is amazing.
Understandable, they're on pride and they do something. That's incredible. A superhero.
Okay. We're on to our opportunity for public comment. Do you want to come up to the microphone, talk for three minutes or less, give your name and address? And I have two people who have signed up, so we're going to start with Linda Nix.
My name is Linda Nix. I live at 4243 Milliken Road, Liberty Township, and before I start, Jenny, you are rocking the air, girlfriend.
Oh, thank you.
Today is the 18th Transgender Day of Remembrance. This is an annual observance to honor the memory of those lives that have been lost in acts of transgender violence, murder because of who they are and because of hate. In 2017, the killing of transgenders is at a record high, and the current administration, not you all, 45 administration, has done more to harm protection for LGBT people than any administration in the past. And in Ohio, even in Ohio, you could be fired because of your orientation or your gender identity. You can be refused housing because of that, and there is no hate crime in the state of Ohio because of your gender identity or your orientation. And Lakota's doing the right things here, I think we all know that. I thank everybody. I know Mr. Carr did the most as far as getting Wes the pilot for the name, preferred name and gender at West, and I, hopefully that can roll out to the other schools, but, no, I lost my thing though. But we need policy. We need policy in the school. There are no guidelines. There's a guideline, but the guideline does nothing. It tells nothing about what students are supposed to expect, what administration is supposed to expect. There's nothing in writing that I'm aware of that tells a teacher that you should do this, or if a child comes to you and says, "I want to use the bathroom," what do I do? There's nothing that tells, that protects the students, that they know that, oh, I'm covered because it's in writing, and that's what we're lacking. We're doing the right thing. Everybody here has been so supportive, and it needs to continue, but it has to be in writing. The time to act is now because these kids are withdrawing, not from the school, but they are, they're hiding, they're going stealth now because they don't feel as protected with the current way things are going now. Thank you.
Emily Osterling, 79, 62, Pendle Point, Westchester, Ohio. I came to you guys a few months before the end of last school year, and I asked you to consider rolling out some type of training to the staff of Lakota, specific to LGBTQ students and individuals. We live in a district that has, in the 17 years I've been here, never addressed LGBTQ students, and it is by far well overdue. We live in a time where more and more individuals and students are coming out, and when you don't prepare your staff to adequately deal with those students, then you're putting them in a position where things are going to happen that don't need to. People are going to call out pronouns that are not preferred. When they don't have the training and it's just ignorance, you can't fault your staff. So I'm asking you again to once, to once again, consider, please, train your staff. Give them the tools they need to adequately educate and interact with these students. Thanks.
Anybody else who would like to address the board?
You can move that. You're welcome. Good?
Hi, my name's Katie Brand, and I'm from Cherokee Elementary, and I want to talk about the cheese sandwich. Last year, I saw, my friend told me that she was having stomach aches during class, and he was having a hard time working because he had a cheese sandwich at lunch, and he was not filled up to be able to actually do a really good job of working. And this year, I saw two people get a cheese sandwich, and one of them, I was crying in the booth with my mom, and one of them I actually helped, where I went back in line and I brought them a cheeseburger and I gave it to them because I knew that it was a good film. Thank you.
So I could tell you a little bit more about this. Katie brought this issue up to me, and I'm Darcy Brand. I'm another cheater parent, and I'm a cheater resident because I will be there years because I have a four-year-old still at home, so we will be here for a long time. This policy is if a child has, arrears or owes money to child nutrition, and $12 or more, instead of getting a normal lunch, they get a cheese sandwich. And policy, this doesn't seem like a terrible policy, but the execution of the policy is pretty harmful to our kids. What happens is they go through the line and they get their normal lunch. At the cashier's lane, where there's five kids on the other side, they're told that they do not have enough money on their account, their food is taken from them, and they are sent back through the line to purchase a cheese sandwich. They get the cheese sandwich, and the cheese sandwich is at a reduced rate, which is new this year, but, and then they proceed on to their seat. Well, what happens is that we're in elementary school, these kids are crying, they're eight years old, seven years old. Half of them probably have money in their backpack that they forgot, or that the room is now locked and they can't go back to get. They're just, I mean, they're little kids. This is what happens. I propose that you change the policy so the kids are not involved, that child nutrition has to contact the parents. They can completely eliminate the kids being involved or having to feel that they're responsible, that they're getting a cheese sandwich because their account hasn't been paid. There are many ways to do this. Today, what happens is a business card is given to the kids that tells them how much they owe on a lunch. That card, if you have a pocket, may get home, but as some of you may know, girls' clothes do not typically have a lot of pockets. You're probably seeing more going home now because kids have coats. Now they're also putting it in the kid's mailbox, but this is an example of how much paper I get from my third grader. So this business card is getting lost and everything. The child nutrition needs to contact parents by calling them, by texting them, by emailing them. Now, we do have Speed Pay or Easy Pay, which is great because it sends an email to the parents, but it's an opt-in program, so you have to select to go to that program. We don't automatically enroll everyone into that, which would be a great option to add to informing the parents. The other thing that they're doing is they're sending a card home, or a sheet home, in the teacher's mailbox. But if you've seen a teacher's mailbox, they're pretty full, and those get lost pretty easily as well. So you're putting this debt issue into several people's hands to try to get it resolved. Mrs. Montgomery and the staff have been awesome at trying to help us resolve this problem. They really care about the kids. We have teachers paying for lunches, we have custodians paying for lunches, we have aides paying for lunches because they can't handle seeing the poor kids cry because they're not getting their food at lunch. Miss Montgomery's motto this year is choose kindness, and I think that we need to create a caring and compassionate environment for our kids so they can excel, and when we refuse to feed them and they're hungry, we cannot do that. We need to learn, teach our children how to treat each other with compassion and respect and demonstrate it ourselves to them.
Anybody else want to address the board?
Can I? Real quick, just on that last one. I would, thank you for sharing your story with us, but I assumed that this had been cleared up, and apparently not, so we will get that fixed, because what you said was happening is not right, so.
Yeah, this actually started happening in March of last year, and I started bringing it to poor Miss Montgomery, because I was in her office saying, "What is going on? Why is this happening?"
Yep.
But it's not resolved, and it's still happening. I made some attempts to correct it, but it's by no means corrected.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the board? Linda and Emily, thank you for coming up and talking. I appreciate the, more information there, so thank you. Okay. We'll go on to the next thing on the agenda is board policy. First read, we have a bunch of policies for first read.
Policy committee was busy.
Policy committee was busy.
Policy committee was busy.
Is Rob going to step up and talk about any of that?
I have, I have a list I can talk, and Mr. Vogelmann, if you want to say anything too, or chime in, either way.
We had our fall update with Neola. Every spring and fall, we have, we have an update. On this past update, there was actually two special sections. One included just some regular policy updates ranging all the way from Ohio revised code, language updates, to house bill updates, all throughout the policies. And then also, there was a special technology update that dealt with emails and student acceptable use policies. Some of those policies, we're going to hold on as it deals with acceptable use parts because we're not going to generate new student signatures for acceptable use policy. And as you know, the world of technology, as it changes, when we get the spring update, those policies will probably change again. So we're going to So we're going to hold on a couple of those, just because the world of technology, we're trying to keep up with, and it's going faster than we can keep up with. So, those are there for you for first read. Some of those, just, as I said, just deal with the Ohio Revised Code and House Bill language. But then there's also a board member initiated 5200 gender identity policy that's up for first read as well. So that is there for you to review. Some other things that are going on that we're looking at, some things that we continue to research. One is talking about student transfers. We have students coming in from other districts. Some schools give credits by the end of the year, some do by semester. And then when they come into us in March, and they have no credits, and they expect us to give them credit for the first semester in which they were never here. So we've had, had that show up this year, it hasn't happened before, so we're working on that. We're also working on some of our field trip guidelines and policies as it deals with student medications, because there has been changes in Ohio Revised Code with allowing students to self-medicate themselves with over-the-counter medications like Tylenol, aspirin, things like that, as it is right now, that we have to, we take field trips that are overnight, that are band trips. We have a nurse that basically takes two suitcases full of medications, and some of those sometimes are like gummy vitamins, that we don't even allow the kids to take that by themselves. And with some of the changes now, they're allowed to take their own gummy vitamins. Some, some common sense language that's coming in, that we're taking care of. So that's some of the stuff that's going on with policy. And then, of course, it's hard to believe, you know, you're talking in November, so in February, we'll probably have another update that'll come up for us, so.
The other thing that I would mention that Rob has been very vigilant on is the changes to the graduation requirements for 18 that have been, that have been coming up, that I still, for lack of a better term, I'm upset with the legislators in Columbus for dragging this out, when you're talking about graduation requirements from kids that are close to graduating. So here we are, still talking about it and waiting on passing policy. But on the executive team, Rob does run point on the changes, so.
Yeah, and so, in the December morning, board member, we're probably going to resolution to you to be passed, just for the class of 2018, for one of the changes that ODE is allowing to have an exception to the rule for this year. Doesn't need to go into policy because it's a one-year. But we do need to pass a resolution according to NEOLA. And actually, it's innocent written that, that put out the legal alert, so I contacted them to ask them if they have a sample of the resolution, what it would look like to pass in December that allows provisions for the class of 2018. So they put out these graduation requirements that, then, we're not going to adhere to for one year. But we already have the requirements required by law in place, but now we have to make an exception. So, set change in whole policy, and then changing it back again according to NEOLA. We just need to pass a resolution, we'd like to do that in December to get that out. And our, our schools are already doing that, communicating it with families already. It's just officially, you all have to pass a resolution that will allow for the exception for the class of 2018. It's not like this is a surprise for them, and then all of a sudden, they find out, now I can graduate, that they've been working with families, they're aware of the, of the exceptions to the rule.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks. I know one of the ones on here is the transgender, the gender identity and expression. If you could check with, I really apologize about this, please. If you could check with, like, administrators and our teachers and see what support they need. Because a lot of what I hear is that they're just not sure what the rules are. Linda brought up the guidelines, do not list the expectations. If you could check with them and see what, what feedback we get from them, and what direction they would like us to go with that.
I can do that.
And also, I think we had an opinion from legal, like, a year ago.
Less than a year ago.
But if you could check with them and see what, what their latest recommendation is. This is kind of a moving target as far as legal goes, so.
Sure, I can get that.
On those two things.
So.
Do you want the attorney to look at this policy, is what you're saying?
That policy, yeah.
Okay. Bexley already put this in place, so this already went through. I mean, if you want him to have him to look at it, but Bexley.
He looked at it too, and said it was.
Right. I just, you know, I mean, that's fine, but I hate to spend the money on him coming back looking at it again, but if he wants to just take a look at it, so. But it should be fine, because, you know, there's other school districts that use it.
So, Mr. Dibble, just so I'm clear, just ask administrative and teacher input about what support they need for transgender issues, what direction they would like.
Yeah.
And then, another opinion from legal. Okay. Can do that.
Anything else on policy? Okay, let's go on to community engagement.
Butler Technology?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Butler Tech's meeting tomorrow at the Natural Science Building. I'm glad, I'm glad you backed up.
I know I'm talking a lot tonight, but I did want to jump in on this one too, just that our kids presented at Capitol Conference, and they were part of Butler Tech as well. So that was nice to see Lakota students represented in Columbus too. So with the catapult that we had a couple months ago, that was here, so. It's good to see those kids in that environment and wearing their We Are Lakota shirts.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, sir.
Community engagement.
Community engagement will meet the first week of December.
We have wrapped up all of the building community engagement meetings. So that was a whirlwind of 22 meetings. We look forward to the next phase of those.
And we do have a couple special interest groups, like, you know, some of the other counselors would like to have one of those sessions and special ed, so we're working that out right now.
And have they requested those from, feedback from the school ones?
Yeah, I think they, they like being a part, they like being a part of the individual school ones, but they'd like to have their own group, have that same type of session, where they can bounce ideas off one another and give input.
Excellent, thank you. District parent council.
We had a meeting, and they presented the report card. That's always fun. And then president's council also met and had a good meeting.
We talked about quality profile as well.
Right.
Negotiated.
Jenny, do you have anything?
I do. This past week, actually on Wednesday, so we got back from Capitol Conference, and I went back up on Wednesday for the first meeting. I've been asked to serve on a statewide committee, which is looking at how we fund schools. And the two representatives who have started this committee are Representative Cup and Patterson. And they've asked, there, there are about a dozen school officials, superintendents and treasurers from around the state, and there's about that many legislators in the room as well. It was a full house, I was amazed at how many people were there. In the first meeting, we started out by just really a history lesson of how we do fund our schools in Ohio, as well as someone from the Council of State Governments out of Chicago was there and spoke to us about how other states fund their schools. Our charge is that, once a month, we're going to meet face-to-face. In between those monthly meetings, we have been divided into subgroups, and we are doing work within the subgroups. And then we come back together as the full group, meet once a month. And then in June, we're supposed to come forward with some type of recommendation. The subgroup that I have been placed on is special education and gifted. So, that will be interesting to see. But I'm just honored to serve on that committee. And it is a working committee, which I'm excited about, instead of just getting it together and griping and complaining. So, I'll keep you up to date on that. That's all I have.
We'll look forward to actual change in the school funding.
Wouldn't that be nice?
That'd be awesome.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful.
Matt?
I do have two real quick to mention. I'd ask you to keep your eyes on Senate Bill 216, which is a deregulation bill, which gives more local control over items like teacher licensure, and aid permits, certification, OTES, and also testing and assessments. It's very, I think, public school-friendly, and makes a lot of common sense changes. And so, it's getting a lot of momentum. It's ironically sponsored by Matt Huffman from the Lima area. And this one, I think, makes a lot of sense. It's not 100% yay, but for the most part, I think it would help Lakota. And again, it's more of a common sense look at some of the things that are going on in Columbus and at the Department of Education. A second one that I would say worries me, and that I ask you to keep your eye on, is House Bill 200 about vouchers. And so, it would be a new statewide program allowing K-12 students to use a voucher to attend private schools. It expands the vouchers to all school districts, regardless of the academic report card, which is something different. See if there's anything else. If the private school tuition is less than the voucher amount, it allows parents to bank the excess dollars in an educational savings account for tuition in textbooks at any private school in Ohio. Directly funds the voucher from the state instead of deducting from the resident school district. But that's a concern, for, I think, obvious reasons. But, and not what public dollars were intended for, or what public education is about.
Todd, do you have anything?
No.
Just a few things. At the State House, they are looking at, Speaker Rosenberg has been termed out. And so there is an ongoing quiet battle, perhaps is a good way to put it, between two contenders, Smith and Householder. And we'll look forward to seeing how that plays out. It will make a difference in how the House runs, depending on where that goes. They're also looking, the State House is looking at a behavioral health redesign for the state. And we'll be hearing more about that to come. I'm not sure how that's going to impact services that we provide. There may be an impact on funding there. Boys and Girls Club opening is going to be on December 1st, just for the board to put that into their calendars. I believe the board will be invited to that.
We had an electronic invite that I will forward to you today, or tomorrow, that came today.
And there you go, it's on its way.
There's an invite in these boards as well.
I'm sorry.
There's one in the envelope.
Oh, okay. I didn't open the mail yet, so. And I'm going to suggest that that value-added recognition letter that we received from the State Board President, in the interest of keeping our local government informed, go to our trustees.
Great idea.
Perhaps with a cover letter from you explaining what value-added means.
I would love to do that. I'll CC the board on that.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions for our legislative experts? Okay. Treasurers' recommendations, we have two on here, approval of board minutes, and the October 2017 financial reports, thank you. Jenny, do you think you're interested in that?
No, the minutes are from the last meeting, and our financial reports were on target with where we plan to be at this time of the year. No big surprises, which is a good thing, so.
Do I have a motion for Treasurers' recommendations, items A and B?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, will you call the board?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
And Mr. Dibble?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent's recommendations, I'm sure you may have a long explanation about all these items. We have items A, which is personnel items.
Routine.
And B, which is donations.
Routine.
Do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion for superintendent's items A and B?
So moved.
Thank you, Linda.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ray. Any discussion on A or B? Hearing none, Jenny, will you call the board?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dibble?
Yes. And Jenny, as soon as you have all those little check marks there, I'm going to ask you to start with closing comments.
Okay. Closing comments. Our students, of course, spotlight, and we had two this evening. Just always amazed at our students and what they can excel in, in the shoes. You know, if you weren't going to ask, I was going to ask about that. It's amazing how many shoes they go through in the miles that he puts in. Also, it's, it's, we're getting into that holiday season, and so, just want to remind all of us that while we travel, or we stay here with our families, and we get ready to sit down at a wonderful dinner, just to remember that there are those in our community who might not be sitting down with family and enjoying the things that we do. So, to remember to be thankful for what we have, and just wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Just to echo what you said, Jenny, you know, at just this time of year, we have so much to be thankful for.
Oh, we do.
And there's some people that don't have nearly what we have, and we do want to remember them the best we can. And the kids here, it's always good to see those kids that come up here, especially those National Merit semifinalists and everything, how hard they work. And from what I understand, once you make it there, there's a 90% chance you may make it all the way to the finals and get a scholarship. So it seems like they've got some clear sailing, well, not really clear sailing, but good chances of getting the scholarships that they want. The dedication that they have, you know, like Dustin's dedication to running, the dedication these kids have to their classes, and Mr. Sweeney getting a perfect score, it's just, it's just amazing to see that, you know, and I think it's wonderful to see our kids, you know. And also, this is a time of year when we have a lot of festivals and a lot of plays and things. So if you have a chance, if you're not a teacher, get into the schools every chance you have. You'll see some wonderful plays, and wonderful things that our kids are putting on.
Yeah, the, the students just keep amazing me, every, every, every meeting. They excel at so many different things. Not only do they excel academically, but I've mentioned this before, how charitable a lot of our kids are, and the stuff they do on their own to help others is something I, I think the level that it's reached is uniquely Lakota. And I'm pretty proud of that. And everybody just have a safe and happy holiday. Thanks.
As we wrapped up our community engagement meetings, it can be a little daunting. Because as we, you hear about a lot of wonderful, amazing things that are happening in our building, but we also hear about some things that we could still do better, and some areas that we could continue to improve. So, I look forward to heading into this new year with more resolve to continue to do better. And, and I guess I'm sitting here being grateful, but also focusing on how I can continue to look through the lens of what I would want to do if each of these children were mine, and how I can better serve each of them. And that's what I continue to look forward to doing as I sit here in this seat every night, and, and will do that going forward.
Thank you, Linda.
Nothing further to add, just to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving with safe travels.
Just really briefly, just to echo what everybody said here, and happy Thanksgiving to, to the group here and to the district. Real quick story to everyone's point about how thoughtful and giving this community is. I got an email today from Pastor Flores, who does a lot with our Hispanic community, and we're working on that population, Hispanic population and that group, with him and a few others, and Hispanic fathers, and doing some, some things. And they had a collection at his church, and he sent me an email about it today, about how giving everybody in the greater Lakota community is. And he said, "We have too much now." Do you know of anybody else that needs, that needs some food for Thanksgiving? So, to me, that was just a great story of how giving our community is, where, you know, you get somebody that has too much, and he's like, "Who else can we help?" And they don't have to be church members or anything like that. So, just to chalk up what everybody else has been saying.
We, since we did the final weighing of the.
Yes.
Stuff the bus, we announced that.
Yeah, that, that went out in multiple press releases from the media relations department, but 27,000 pounds, which was 50% more than what we've ever done in the past, which is also a testament to our. also a testament to our community. And I remember the board looking at me when we talked about making that change, saying, "You better get more," pretty much quote, unquote. So we did make that, make that ranking. So kudos to our, to our kids and our community.
Excellent. Thank you. And I will not have any closing comments, but I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, will you call the roll?
Okay, sorry. Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dibble?
Yes.
Thank you all.